I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, commencing at 7:00 p.m. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Fields, and myself, Council President Kritzer. We also have our Mayor Angela Burney here with us. Tonight, we have three items on the agenda. The first is the Transportation Master Plan Status Update. Woo-hoo. The Environmental Sustainability Action Plan 2025 Refresh Update, and Council Talk Time. So the first item on the agenda is the Transportation Master Plan Status Update. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kritzer, and good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. So this study session will provide you an opportunity to continue our discussions on the Transportation Master Plan, and we will be focusing tonight on the Transit Sections and the Street Sections, Chapters, of that document. Staff will provide an update on our progress and the timeline for the remaining milestones, and then do a summary of the highlights of both the Street Plan and the Transit Plan Chapters. And then we will also be here to answer any questions you have at the end of the presentation. I did want to note that Michael Hints would have been here, but he is absent due to attending the National Association of City Transportation Officials, the NACTO Designing Cities Conference this week. And thank you so much to Councilmember Fields for helping us get a membership in that organization. It's already had some great returns on us understanding transportation and the type of data that they collect and having access to their resources. So tonight, we will hear a presentation from Francesca Liberty and Seraphie Allen, Deputy Director, and I are here to answer any questions at the end that you may have. So with that, Francesca.
All right. So we can go to the next slide, Seraphie. And so, yeah, as mentioned, we're going to review the Street and Transit Chapters. We're going to focus tonight's discussion on the topics that were brought up at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So we'll review those topics. These are the kind of, we have about five or six key topics here for both the Streets Chapter and Transit Chapters together. We'll also review some additional highlights of the Streets Plan that we wanted to make sure to bring some awareness, and then we'll discuss some next steps. All right, go ahead. So I'll do a quick overview first of our TMP schedule. We are on track for TMP adoption in Q1 of 2026. Just as a reminder, we pushed out this timeline to allow for some more time for detailed review and, yeah, fleshing out the content. And yes, here we are with our council review timeline. As you can see, we have three more study sessions following tonight, prior to publishing the TMP draft plan for the community to review and bring to Planning Commission then for a public hearing. That is anticipated later this year and then into early 2026. All right, so I'll start with the topics for our Streets Plan Chapter. Again, these are the kind of the questions and the topics that were brought up at our Committee of the Whole Meeting. So first, we'll start with some motorcycle parking. So we want to kind of more broadly address this topic, this question that was brought up. The TMP Curb Space Chapter will be addressing this topic and kind of, in a more broad sense, addressing parking needs for a variety of vehicles, including motorcycles, but also including bikes, scooters, e-bikes, and cars, as we've discussed. We've also forwarded Councilmember Fields' comment on to our colleagues in Public Works. Our Traffic Operations and Safety Engineering Group is leading the city's curb space management plan that will happen here in the future, and they'll get really into the more kind of detailed, nitty-gritty things such as specific motorcycle parking locations. All right. Next, I'll get into our Roundabout First Strategy. There was a request for some more background and context on this. So for some background, background on roundabouts. Roundabouts are a proven safety countermeasure that supports the Safe System Approach that is the basis of our adopted Safer Streets Action Plan. Roundabouts reduce the speed of approaching motorists and significantly reduce the number of potential conflicts by 75%. There are 75% fewer conflict points, I should say, at a roundabout than at an intersection. That's shown in this diagram here in the bottom right. So the city of Redmond has several roundabouts in place. Two of these are on Northeast 116th Street, and there's one on Northeast 76th, and we have at least one planned at Bellred and West Lake's Mammoth Parkway. All of these are single-lane roundabouts. So I will note that roundabout design has evolved over the last 10 years. There's some really good guidance out there for making roundabouts accessible and intuitive, especially for the visually impaired and folks that need some more time crossing the street or some more assistance. And we do understand that roundabouts won't work everywhere. So we know that, we understand that, but roundabouts can be more economical and more resilient as intersection traffic control. They don't have the same limitations as traffic signals. So for example, when we had our bomb cyclone in inclement weather, you don't need to worry about a roundabout losing power. So they can be a little bit more durable in that sense, and that's one reason why we want to continue to consider them. We based our Roundabout First Strategy on WashDOT's guidance, on state guidance for roundabouts, and we did adjust the language to be more specific to Redmond's needs. And so I'll just remind us, roundabouts aren't feasible or appropriate everywhere, obviously, due to space required to construct them and just other, mainly space reasons, but, yeah, they're not always feasible. But our roundabout strategy reflects this and has these three key actions. So first, we want to update our roundabout design manual to incorporate current best practices. We want to incorporate approved public right-of-way accessibility guidelines and a prescribed process for evaluating the feasibility and cost benefit of the roundabout versus other traffic control types. Then, next, we want to develop a roundabout plan. A first step would be identifying existing signal locations where equipment or geometric upgrades are needed, where there are a high number of crashes that could be solved by replacing the signal with a roundabout, or where there are some other factors that could be mitigated by switching the traffic control to a roundabout. And then finally, for all new development, where a traffic impact analysis would trigger a new signalized or stop-controlled intersection, we would want to first evaluate the feasibility of installing a roundabout. So now that we've talked through the topics that came up at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, I have some, another few topics here that we just wanted to highlight and call your attention to, other key pieces in our Streets Plan. So our analysis for the plan focused on identifying what investments are needed to accommodate the priority modes in each corridor. And this chapter included a list of modal corridors and the improvements that are needed to achieve our layered street network concept. So as this graphic shows, that's what we're looking to do in Redmond, is have kind of this layered approach to our streets network, allowing connectivity and mobility for different types of road users, both motorized vehicles and non-motorized, like pedestrians and bicyclists. This chapter includes a list of these modal corridors and then the improvements that are needed, and it reinforces the concepts developed in the Safer Streets Action Plan, including using the Safe Systems Approach and setting appropriate speeds for the roadway environment, and then, in addition, evaluating roundabouts, as we've just discussed. I'd also like to highlight that we've had close coordination with the Fire Department through the development of this chapter to work through the inherent tensions that can come up between the complete streets design and emergency response. So some of these actions that we've developed in conjunction are to use context-appropriate and street-scale compatibility emergency response apparatuses. So some of these more, could be maybe smaller or different types of apparatuses to meet emergency response time targets, and that's using a transportation system that prioritizes safety and accessibility. And then, in addition, we want to employ street design and operational strategies that would minimize the impact of the emergency response times, such as bikeways that are sufficient widths to accommodate emergency response apparatuses, using mountable curbs or other strategies at different intervals along the network that would allow emergency vehicles to more easily enter and exit a bikeway. We would also think about setting stop bars at intersections, or setting back stop bars at intersections, excuse me, to accommodate the lane approachment of large vehicles making right turns, such as buses, trucks, and fire trucks. And then, we'd also think about parking restrictions or other measures that would ensure sufficient space for equipment to be deployed for emergency response. And then finally, we would avoid certain traffic calming treatments on priority emergency routes, or we'd use designs that would accommodate the wider vehicles for emergency response, and that would also accommodate a larger turning radius of these vehicles as well. So we'd want to really make sure we're thinking collaboratively about how we can continue to implement this approach. And then finally, I'll discuss our tree canopy a little bit. We've included a strategy in this chapter that's focused on preserving and adding tree canopy within the public right-of-way. This will help address the Redmond 2050 policies and will advance our ESAP, our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, goals. Some actions to incorporate this are assessing the value of our street trees within the public right-of-way, using some tools that we have, such as iTree and other tools of that nature. We'd want to adopt a street tree preservation policy and evaluation for all capital projects and development projects. And then, we'd want to evaluate the purchase of tree-moving equipment, or training, or hiring of staff to facilitate tree relocation. We'd want to think of that as an option when preserving trees significantly increases the cost of an infrastructure project. And then finally, we'd want to consider bringing trees into our asset management system as well. So with that, I'll pause here for any other questions on the Streets Plan before we move on to the Transit Chapter.
Council, are there questions? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Looking at the section on ADA-compliant metro stops and bus stops. Really appreciate that section in there because, yeah, they're not great right now, and a lot of them don't have shelters. Have we thought about including anything for, including solar on those structures or green tops on those?
Yeah, that's something we'd have to coordinate with Metro about. So anything related to specifically metro bus stops and facilities would be under their purview. Of course, we work together with them, but, yeah, if that's something that we'd want to continue with, we'd have to work in collaboration with them, for sure.
Definitely be interested in those solutions because I've seen them around in other places and think that it's great, especially if we can get solar to panel those little light beacons or a little bit of light in those shelters so that it is more welcoming, especially when it's dark at 4:30.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Others? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So this might be like down the road, but I remember about four years ago, there was a lot of private companies who were recognizing that cities were doing what we're doing, which is create options, lots of options, that in some cases can be put together for a trip, like ride your bike, take the bus, Uber, whatever, you know, combine all of these things. And the work at the time was to create phone apps that could then say, I want to go from here to here in the most cheapest way, or the most quickest way, or the most...
Like a trip planner app? Yeah.
So is there a role for the city to encourage that, or inspire that, or partner with that? And is that something that, and again, I recognize that's not necessarily part of tonight's topic, but I think it would really enhance tonight's topic.
Yeah, that's a great question. What you're describing to me sounds like transportation demand management strategies, so ways to get people out of their cars, onto buses, onto bikes, and kind of falls under that umbrella, and that's something we'll be bringing here to council. That chapter, the TDM, we call it TDM Chapter, will be coming to council, I believe, in the fall. So, yeah, we'll learn more about it then.
Perfect. I was going to put it in your terms, but I didn't want to overdo my skill level.
Of course.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the overview, Francesca. I think I was one of the councilmembers who had asked for a little bit more on the roundabouts, those images that you offered with the really compelling, you know, conflict points that are eliminated as a result and overall help to lower speeds. That's really clarifying, so thank you. Just to kind of actually report back to the council by way of this is a timely topic, the mayor and I attended the PSRC General Assembly last week where we adopted the Safe Streets for All Action Plan, and the guest speaker was a former member, well, the administrator of the Highway Safety Federal Agency, and was a very compelling speaker, spoke on a number of things, including the recommendations to "When in Doubt, Roundabout." So that has been in my mind ever since.
Of a rhyme.
And including, there really, he has many other recommendations that apply to this work, but just to close the gap, all of my questions on the roundabouts have been answered, so thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll ask, I have two questions. One is, actually, it's more of a comment. One comment and then a question. I, first of all, just wanted to say, I really love the mixture here of thinking about kind of what are the facilities and needs that we have within our street network, and also what kinds of streets we want to promote, especially Strategies 8 and 9, kind of bringing in some of those, that like triple bottom line, that environmental piece. And I do appreciate, since I've asked quite a few questions about this, on tree canopy, especially Strategies 9B and C, I think the idea of setting the plan for us to be able to create a street tree preservation policy is really what I've been trying to get at in questions as it's come, like one or two different projects of like, how do we think about these trade-offs? If we have a policy and we have a strategy to think about, you know, as we're going to create these, this vision of these connected streets with these different amenities, how do we think about trees in the context of that? Also, whether there is a way to move some of those trees, because, you know, it's hard to replace something that's hundreds of years old and/or a giant tree that takes a really long time to grow with a small tree and have it be the same. So if there's ways that we can move those trees, I think that's exciting. So I'll just say that, appreciate the tree attention, as well as Strategy Number Eight around kind of thinking about how we make green infrastructure and think about the stormwater considerations. One question I had was that it references in here the goals around Vision Zero Action Plan, or to create a Vision Zero Action Plan that shows up in our comp plan. Is it, are Safer Streets for All Action Plan effectively our Vision Zero Action Plan? Or are we, do we still have plans to create a new additional one?
I believe the Safer Streets Action Plan is effectively, that's what sets our goal for eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes in Redmond, so effectively, that is our plan. I think there's ways that we can continue to incorporate that, as we've talked about, with the implementation of that plan as well.
I'll just add to, the reason why we did that approach is because Vision Zero was narrowly focused, whereas using the Safe Systems Approach and the Safer Streets for All had a broader scope, and so it wasn't just focused on the fatalities. It was also focused on, which we don't have luckily, as many in Redmond, and so it also allows us to think more about the serious injuries and near misses opportunities.
Great. Okay, and I'll just note also, I think, having worked on that plan, this whole chapter reads so well-aligned with that plan. It's like there aren't real surprises in here because it really is aligned with the plan we just passed at a recent council meeting, so glad to see all that integrated. Do you want to continue?
Yeah, there's no other questions?
Did you have a comment, Deputy Director?
No, I was just going to say, thank you. We try to coordinate the plans.
Yeah, it looks great.
All right, we'll move on to the Transit Chapter then. There we go. All right, so our first update here, our first topic on the Transit Chapter is an update on our Regional Mobility Grant. So Redmond's grant request for the Regional Mobility Grant was included in the transportation package recently signed by the governor. We anticipate receiving our official notification of the grant award in June, which is very exciting. As you know, our Regional Mobility Grant application includes a micro-transit shuttle and a shared parking program. The purpose of this program is to provide another non-single-occupant vehicle, or SOV, non-SOV, connection between downtown Redmond and the surrounding neighborhoods, and as well as utilizing the current parking in Redmond that's underutilized. And then, the proposed shuttle offers a testing demonstration for a future metro flex area. So that's why I've included this map here on the slide. You'll see that the light pink area is the proposed metro flex areas that the city wants to advocate for, so that we're really including this in our Transit Chapter as kind of showing what our priorities are and what we'd like to work towards in the area of flexible transit, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a few slides. But that, in conjunction with the, kind of that darker pink area, is the area that Metro has indicated where metro flex will operate in kind of Overlake and the kind of crossroads neighborhood of Bellevue, once the crosslake connection of light rail connects, fully connects. So that's what we've heard from Metro, so we want to continue that momentum, and that's why we have noted that the future metro flex areas could be aligned with our Regional Mobility Grant micro-transit shuttle. So if we kind of use this shuttle as sort of a test case for flexible transit in this sense, Metro can see that as a successful option for us, and that can kind of further that advocacy for metro flex in Redmond. And then, I, oh, and then I'll also add that we're beginning to discuss our shared parking program with stakeholders in June, and we'll have an RFP for a shuttle vendor released here later this summer. All right, so, yeah, to continue our discussion here on flexible transit, so Redmond's existing van pool and community van programs provide our current flexible transit options here in Redmond, and then, as I mentioned, we have an upcoming metro flex area in the Overlake Crossroads area. And as mentioned previously, so if awarded, our Regional Mobility Grant program would have a kind of a pilot opportunity for flexible transit that the city can point to when advocating to Metro to expand our metro flex areas as we'd like there to be. So the Regional Mobility Grant will provide that flexible transit in the Education Hill neighborhood, which is an area that we would like to continue to advocate for with Metro. And Metro does look favorably, as I've mentioned, on pilot programs such as the Regional Mobility Grant Shuttle, and can then implement metro flex in areas where successful pilots exist. In addition, oh, sorry, I said one, a couple other things on that slide. So Metro will begin updating their strategic plan, Metro Connects, in 2026. So we're going to continue to track this effort and use that as a venue to advocate for the city's transit priorities as well. And then, yeah, just overall, this Transit Chapter provides the city a good opportunity to articulate our goals for transit in Redmond. So this is one of the first times the city's been able to really put that all on paper and say, here's what our goals are for the future of transit in Redmond. And this chapter really starts the conversation and sets that foundation for what Redmond can advocate for with our local transit agencies, knowing that agencies like Sound Transit and King County Metro are really the ones that are driving the transit here in Redmond. But we can really set these goals so that we, yeah, we can set our goals for what we'd like in the future and be able to advocate for that. Yeah, good, good now. All right, so now I'll talk about some mobility hubs. So in our Transit Chapter, we identified two different types of mobility hubs that we'd like to implement in Redmond, neighborhood and regional hubs. So neighborhood hubs would be located outside of our urban centers. Those would provide a variety of mobility options to connect folks to destinations within that neighborhood and connect from outside of our urban centers into Redmond's urban centers. Then additionally, regional hubs, which would be located within our urban centers at our existing light rail stations, those would provide connections within Redmond and beyond into neighboring regions or neighborhoods, and would also provide the opportunity to be proactive with our economic development and bring retail or other services to our transit stations. So mobility hubs, it's really bringing, really about bringing everything together and creating kind of that centralized location for getting around Redmond, providing those different options. So features of mobility hubs can include bike storage, micro-mobility, parking, car share, electric vehicle charging, transit facilities, wayfinding signage, and placemaking attributes such as street furniture, food trucks, retail space, restrooms, any sort of facilities or features that may be convenient at these types of locations. And then implementing mobility hubs in Redmond will require formalizing our site locations of where we would like these to be. We'd need to confirm the design elements that would be required. This could require establishing partnerships with other agencies or businesses, that we'd need to then look to identifying and securing funding, and then determining roles for how operations and maintenance plays within these areas. And then finally, once implemented, monitoring our success and really seeing the progress and kind of measuring how effective these are. All right, and then our final topic here for the Transit Chapter is transit-only lanes. So transit-supportive capital projects can include transit-only lanes, or can also include transit queue jumps at signalized intersections, which is a separate signal for a transit vehicle to move through the intersection on its own. So transit-only lanes provide that separate lane for transit along the entire corridor, and we'd like to, we'd like to think that these lanes can also be used for freight or delivery vehicles. This was mentioned when we discussed the Freight Chapter previously. And then those queue jumps, as I mentioned, or shorter transit-only segments would provide transit priority at specific intersections or along just shorter corridor segments where maybe that full lane wouldn't be totally feasible along the corridor. So this chapter identifies potential transit-only corridors along Willow's Road and Avondale Road. Transit signal priority or shorter transit-only corridor segments are also proposed along Redmond Way, at the 164th Avenue and Northeast 83rd Street intersection, and along 148th Avenue. So we wanted to kind of propose these, there's a table in the chapter, propose these different locations for a transit priority to give ourselves some options and some ideas of what Redmond would like to and what we could implement further along into the future. And then with that, I'll pause here for any questions on the Transit Chapter.
Thank you so much. Questions? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Francesca. That was great. Backing up to where we first started, you had mentioned, and it was a term that I didn't find anywhere in the packet, was shared parking. And what exactly does that mean? So that should be a super quick one.
Yeah, so that's part of the Regional Mobility Grant application. So what we're proposing is looking at different lots around Redmond, parking lots that are maybe underutilized at the moment, don't have as many cars filling them up, and seeing if we can work with those businesses or organizations that own those lots to provide a parking resource for others that may be, that may be looking for parking in the area.
That's what I thought that it was. I just wanted clarification, what timeline are we looking at being able to possibly bring that online?
So we're hoping that the Regional Mobility Grant program, that why we're wanting to really get going on it even before we have the formal notification, is we'd like to get it going when the light rail connects across I-90.
And for the transit-only lanes, when we're talking about that going into Willow's and Avondale, what timeline are we looking at that as well?
That's a harder question to answer. Those may be further out because that would need to be, it would depend on the type of project that we'd be looking at, and if the type of partnership we'd have with Metro and with others. So I don't think we have any set timelines for those yet. Right now, we're using kind of that table that lists out those different improvements as kind of a idea bank for some, for potential projects that we'd like to move forward with in the future.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that this is our first time including a Transit Chapter because historically, again, Sound Transit and Metro are primarily leading the work, but we thought it was important with, you know, the greater connectivity for us to be able to say, like, this is what Redmond wants, even necessarily if Metro and Sound Transit doesn't have the capacity to do that. We can state our needs and then have better advocacy for that. So in some ways, this chapter is really meant to say, hey, here's our stamp, so that you know where we're trying to go.
And the reason why I ask is because sometimes growth can seem very slow, right? Like, if we think about some of the developments that are going up, it seems like it's slow, 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 and then we blink and bam, there's a building. And I feel that that's similarly what is about to happen, of course, with our transportation. You know, we're starting to notice, okay, there's a little bit more pickup, and then making sure that we're staying out ahead of it in the planning piece of it, that, no, we're thinking about this. Because some could argue, we just don't have the volume on the roads right now to even be considering something like this. However, I strongly feel that it's, the building analogy that I just used with the developments, it's like, okay, it's slow, 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 and then all of a sudden, bam, there it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll also note, in some of the discussions we had last year in the Subcommittee focused on first-last mile and flexible transit, we had this discussion about really kind of focusing the work of that group with some of the folks that are presenting today about... today about how is it that we make sure that when light rail opens, and especially when it connects, that we can tell our community, here's X, Y, Z, the ways you're going to be able to easily get into it, right? And that that's the goal, and so it is that thinking ahead that you're describing, because when it does come online, all of a sudden, there's going to be a thousand questions, and hopefully through this work, we have answers. So, thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, it's sort of in the spirit of the conversation over the last few minutes, I'm super excited about the connection with other jurisdictions, other communities, other locations. I think that's, that is like a gigantic step forward to a real-world, state-of-the-art transportation system. I think it's, people don't expect to stop at the city borders. That's typically not the end of their trip. And your recognition of that is remarkable, and, and I applaud you. When I think in terms of like Bellevue and Bellhop and some of the other systems that we will be integrating with, that, that becomes kind of complex, similar to Nova Camina's point about going slow and trying to keep up or staying at the same pace as the other jurisdictions, Metro, et cetera. Have, will there be some policy discussions on how we want to approach that integration and those inter-local agreements and that interconnectivity? Will we be talking about that at some point? Because I, there, there's always a history in local government to think that particular local government has all the answers. I think City of Redmond does much better than other places. But, but I also see this as a pretty big challenge to try to integrate. So will we be talking about that before you move much further?
Yeah, I mean, I think, as we've mentioned, this really, the transit chapter especially kind of sets the framework for, this is really talking about what are Redmond's goals as far as transit goes. So, and we, we recognize that we'll need to work with, with others, other agencies, neighboring cities perhaps, to make sure that we can have those kind of interconnected networks. So, so yes, I imagine that, that we will need, and we, I, yeah, I know that we will need coordination with our, our neighbors to make sure that some of these projects make sense, especially.
Will we have a cute name like Bellhop something Red Hop or?
A na, a cute name? Is that what you said?
We are thinking about, for the little micro, you know, we're thinking about branding for that side. Redhop seems a little easy, but we'll see. We'll, we'll throw out some options.
I'm sure we'll have a cute name, yeah.
Great, cute names are great. And then one last thing, you know, I tend to lean towards getting people out of their cars, but the reality is that people do drive their cars. So do you feel like this overall transportation plan is being sensitive to that balance of needs?
Yeah, I think that's, that goes back to those, kind of that layered streets network, those modal corridors. We, we recognize that we're, we're not in a, we're not in the type of city where, you know, we're not in New York City where no one can, has, has a car, you know, people take the subway all the time, that type of thing. So we're, we're thinking about prioritizing different traffic mo, or excuse me, transportation modes on the corridors where it makes sense. And when those corridors overlap, that's where that, those different kind of modal corridors comes into play. What different improvements and what can we look at to make sure that we're integrating those in a way that makes sense and in a way that still provides seamless connectivity for people?
I'll share too that part of our goal, right, of increasing those modes is so that greater, better vehicle travel for people on the road than
Right.
getting stuck in traffic for time and time again, so that the idea is that people that need to be able to be in a vehicle and taking their family to five different soccer games can be able to do that, and people who can just walk to the grocery store or take their e-bike or hop on the light rail would be able to do that too, and not take as much space necessarily on the roads.
They don't, they may not know right away that they're benefiting, but hopefully over time
Yeah.
they'll know we did it for them as well, or people who like to drive are benefiting from that. So, thank you. You guys are great, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. The transit chapter is beautiful. It's absolutely in alignment with the principles that we set forward in Redmond 2050, and I think outlines what the community has been asking for in terms of the comfort, frequency, and location of services. We have talked a lot about the Regional Mobility Grant today because there's, it's a timely thing of interest, and I actually just want to double down on it for a second to say that we actually have our upcoming community meeting on Thursday, and I am sure we're going to get light rail questions. And so I actually, in my mind, I'm kind of framing the Regional Mobility Grant as, as like a group project, a community project, because I think it's important for us as council members to reflect back to community, yes, we are going to try and build this service so that you can get to the light rail, especially if you live on Education Hill. In a, in a, we have heard you, and we, we came up with, we came up with the dollars, and we're going to try and build this solution. What we need residents on Education Hill to do, once that service is available, is use it. Use it a lot and demonstrate how valuable it is, right? Because that's the data that we need to take back to Metro. So I hope neighbors will join us, and it's something that they've demanded for a long time. When we get into the end of the year, I think on a related note, in terms of our ability to sit at the table with Metro, thanks for letting us know that they're doing a strategic plan in 2026. If there are regional boards or committees that it would be helpful to have Redmond council members sitting on, lately, the Sound Cities Association has not had enough volunteers, and some of the committees haven't had as much representation from our caucus up here in the northern cities. So if we can be more helpful toward the end of the year, I hope that you'll shout out some of those opportunities, and I'll come back to you again on that later in the year. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. I just also want to say, as part of your community meeting, that businesses and developers, if you're hearing from them, an opportunity for them in the shared parking program is to think about how they are being better interconnected. And so if it's a small business saying they don't have parking for their employees, it's how are we connecting them to Nelson Legacy or Redmond Town Center, that they can then create a leasing agreement together to have parking for their employees rather than just utilizing the street parking. So there's lots of ways we can be coming together as a community, and that's the other part of this grant too, is one, ride the, the little micro unit, and then two, think about how, you know, you can be strategic with your parking needs.
Other questions, comments? Council Vice President Forsey?
Thanks. I realize I said my transit comment earlier, and now I'm going to say my street plan comment now.
No worries.
Sorry. But I just wanted to just compliment you all. I love that you have in, on all the street plans and what we're going to do, how you've noted, like, hey, we could do a waterline improvement project on this section, because you, I can't even tell you how many times I hear from community members, you just paved the road and then you tore it up another time to redo the waterline. So I really, really just wanted to compliment you all on, on actively mentioning those and calling those projects out. So, thank you.
Not seeing other questions, so I'll ask a question here. So, actually, I'll follow up on the, the conversation around neighboring jurisdictions, just to say that there's been a lot of chalk, I think, especially with the opening of the downtown Redmond Light Rail extension and the Marymore stops within the East Side Transportation Partnership. It's kind of gone from, we're discussing potential collaborations to Woodinville and Samamish really wanting to engage in, in Issaquah, in Kirkland, like really want to talk about, okay, so how are we, you know, getting our people to you, especially Woodinville and Samamish, I'll call out, are very interested in this. And actually, I'm very interested in some ways, what they, what's, what I hear from some of the council members there in conversations have been almost about also how they and their cities might create something like what you're describing of the neighborhood hubs, to be able to get people from some of the key places in their cities over to our transit centers, and, and then also the, so how are we all going to work together to advocate on this? So I love seeing the advocacy in there. And I would just flag that I'm, I guess I'm, I'm interested to hear from, from you all on what it is that we really, what it could look like if we did want to advocate, like what, what some of our, top of our list would, would be and how, because we do have this, this organizing body, right, that we created. And so thinking about, I think this is the moment where we could really use that, because we get this touchpoint with Metro every month, to be able to kind of more effectively advocate for what, what we're hoping to see. So I guess I'm curious if you have any thoughts on like what those next steps are, and/or we can also, would love to circle up with you offline as well.
Yeah, I mean, I also heard that in Councilmember Fields' question too, around like partnerships outside of just with, you know, advocacy for our transit work, but thinking about how we, it is one of our action items, so I'll, I'll pitch it to say it's an action item that we're going to develop with you all, to think about how we do better regional advocacy, particularly on the east side and north, north side cities. So in, in some ways, I think we're both kind of looking at each other to say, what's the best way? I think we can definitely as staff think about what we would be wanting you to advocate for, but I think I'll also look to the council to think about, what do you think is the best ways for you to partner with your fellow electeds in other cities to make the best kind of request?
Thank you. Well, I'll look forward to following up, because I think, I feel like this is kind of the, the policy window for us to really work on this at this moment while we have that momentum. One thing I was going to note about East Link Connections, which is discussed quite deeply in this chapter, is, and that I'm wondering if there needs to be one action on, is just how we communicate about those changes in service and about, just ongoing, because it seems to me the way that Metro is planning to make these changes, and then will continue to make, well, there'll be kind of updated iterations, and part of what may allow people to access and, and want to take transit is if they clearly understand how to take transit and, because like, for example, you know, one of the changes that's going to happen with these link connections is that, is that the 221 is going to start going on a slightly different route than it's gone, right? It's not going to cross Education Hill, it's going to go up and around. And that's one where people, some people might say, oh my gosh, the, the route has changed, and how am I going to access this, right? And so, but it's really, and I, I imagine that Metro will do some communicating, but is there a role that we want to articulate in this plan of how we as a city will communicate about changes, or even just to say that we commit to making sure that people are aware so that they feel confident in transit?
Definitely. So I think what I'm, what I'm hearing that you're getting at also falls kind of within that TDM, Transportation Demand Management umbrella. So we have our Go Redmond program that really amplifies King County Metro's social media and, and their communications as well, but that is also kind of taking a role in helping people get around Redmond, providing those different mobility options, and, and really getting the word out of how people can access those resources. So that is something we'll talk about in much more detail when we, when we get to that chapter, which I, which is, which is next time in July. So, so yeah, so that'll be coming up. But, but I totally, totally hear what you're saying, wanting to continue to amplify that message, get resources out there, make sure people are aware of, of those changes that continue to happen.
Great. And just one final thing on East Link Connections, then I'll go around for the other, since it's on the same, same topic. I think the other thing that I, I just wonder, I would love to get your thoughts on, in terms of the actual changes, I think there are some changes assuming that as people connect, they're going to be taking away certain parts of, of routes, assuming people will connect into light rail and then be able to make it into Seattle going all the way around. But some places where right now you can take it right over 520. And there still will be buses going over 520, but there'll be some changes, and there's been some discussion as well about that. And I'm just curious if there's some sort of principle within here that we, that we want to talk to, not just about being able to access transit, but transit that also like gets you to where you want to go efficiently, just so that we kind of have our, our goals in mind for, as we advocate, to make sure that, you know, if, because if someone is going to, right now can take the 545 right across the bridge to where they're trying to go, and from, and there still will be a bus like that going forward, but, but let's say you're from a different part and you end up being told basically you need to get on the light rail right an extra hour around, you may just stop taking transit, right? So like, how do we kind of build that philosophy into here, making sure we not only have access to transit, but also like efficient routes?
Yeah, I think that's been built into our, the future transit network that we have in, in the chapter, and there's a discussion on frequency of, of transit. So we want to make sure that we have routes in Redmond that get people where they need to go and, and connect to our neighboring jurisdictions. But we also want to make sure that we're advocating with Metro for more frequency along those routes. So I think that's, that's another component, I think, of what you're saying, is people, people want to know that the bus is coming, and, and when they do, they're more likely to take it. So I think getting that frequency on the routes that we do have is, is equally important.
Great, thank you. Thank you for answering my 18 questions about East Link Connections. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to reflect back a couple of pieces because we added dollars in the budget this time to have an additional print newsletter because folks have told us that that's such a highly valuable place where they get their information. So as the council president was, was talking about, you know, how different neighborhoods are going to have to learn new strategies, not Overlake, by the way, we just walked to the station and it's awesome. But, you know, an insert in the middle of the newsletter that folks can pull out and tear out and like, these are my grass lawn strategies. The way that we keep that newsletter, our highest strength communication tool is by making it as useful as possible. So for what it's worth, that was the vision that kind of was rolling in my mind as the council president was offering our feedback. Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
I wanted to let you know that I got a note from Deputy Director Garcia reminding me that any participation from the council on the Regional Transit Committee, RTC, would help with advocacy on that.
Great, thank you. And I will just note, speaking, my colleague mentioned Overlake, that I'm excited about also Metro's Overlake flexible transit pilot. We've been looking for that for a long time, and I didn't know we were getting it until I read this chapter, so I was like, yay.
Yeah. We've heard, that's, it'll be when the light rail connects across I-90. That's what Metro's indicated to us.
Got it.
Yeah.
Great. Can I ask one final question, and then we'll wrap up, and if you all want to think of anything else in the meanwhile, feel free. On the bus lanes proposal, which I think is a great one, how are you thinking about, for example, a road like Avondale, where also we've talked about wanting to have more, more bike infrastructure, and there's only kind of a certain amount of lane space, and, and in other areas too, or Redmond Way, some of the ones that you mentioned, right, there, there may be only a certain amount. How are, how are you thinking about the framework for how we evaluate kind of those different modal options?
Yeah, that's, again, that's where that kind of layered network, that graphic that was on the slide comes into play. So especially for those corridors like Redmond Way and Avondale that are at, at capacity and are such key routes for folks, things like transit signal priority is, is a great option. So it, we may not have the space to have a bus-only lane all along the corridor, but if we can, at the signals, provide that priority for transit vehicles to kind of jump ahead of, of other cars, then, then that can kind of keep that frequency, keep the reliability of the transit routes going and improved. So, so yeah, we're, that's, that's a, it's a sticky situation sometimes, and that's why we have to be really careful and smart with how we think about those different modal corridors and how we're, we're layering on those improvements.
I can give an example too, that they just implemented on a street that I live close to on Rainier, where it was two lanes, and you, a lot of those lanes need to be able to turn right, and they made it turn right only or a, or a bus-only lane. So cars are getting into the lane along with the bus, but in order to mostly turn right. And so it allows that bus to like gain that extra 400 feet, honestly, from that section. And so there's different strategies like that. Why, it might not be a whole bus lane, but again, as Francesca says, it can be portions that are layered with the other options that people need to come.
Council Vice President Forsey?
And I will just note, I think I saw our first one in action by the light rail station, our first jump, jump light, I just, at the transit station, yeah. I just, I just noticed it the other day at the diagonal crosswalk when I saw someone crossing diagonally, and then I saw the bus light lane, and I was like, it's happening. So it's very exciting to see it all in play, and knowing that once that ridership picks up, that we've already got that infrastructure in place is fantastic. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I would be remiss not to ask this question, and I don't think you have an answer tonight, but you might know when you'll have an answer. These things that we're talking about are great. I'm a big fan. But there's a price, there's a cost. So when will we have some sense of, can we afford it?
To be continued. I think we have our regular capital improvement program, but I think for additional investments will be, especially when we think about the partnerships with Metro, that will be something we'll need to scope out individually dependent on the project.
Great, thank you.
All right.
I'd just like to also note that the adoption of our Save for Streets for All Action Plan actually makes us eligible for many grants that we didn't have access to before, so we can do some of those early kind of pilot projects that end up showing us the way to accomplish more permanent solutions as well. So we'll be bringing some of those forward in the next. So we'll be bringing some of those forward in the next six, 12 months.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. And seeing no other questions, I think we'll wrap this up. Do you want to remind us our next touch?
Yeah, so we'll come back in July for our next study session. We'll be discussing our pedestrian plan, the Transportation Demand Management chapter, and we'll also review the feedback to date from our community engagement efforts, especially our focus groups that we've been having throughout this quarter.
Great, thank you so much. With that, we'll wrap up this item and move on to the next one. So the next item on our agenda is our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan 2025 Refresh Update. And we have Jenny Liebeck, our Sustainability Manager here. We'll give her a moment to take her seat, get her computer together as well. And then you can take the mic when you're ready, Ms. Liebeck.
It's good to see you all again. So I am Jenny Liebeck, Sustainability, Sustainability Manager in the Executive Department. And with me this evening is Mica Bonkowski. He is our new Sustainability Program Administrator. And I know that you've seen Mica in other settings, but Mica moved from the Public Works Solid Waste Team to the Sustainability Team in March. So really excited to now be here as a team of two this evening. So at the end of March of this year, we kicked off the update of our 2020 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And so today is actually the first of three study sessions that we currently have scheduled this year. And our focus for this evening is going to be on the outreach and engagement strategy as well as a preview of the data analysis work that we have underway. So specifically tonight, we'll touch on the policy guidance for the refresh, and we'll review the ways that we're working in partnership with the community during the ESAP update, and then give a preview of our approach to data analysis for the plan. And then we'll close out with our kind of next steps and timeline. So the refresh is, I think, it's really exciting. One, because our programming is maturing, we now have five years of lessons learned and just progress made as we've implemented the ESAP. But most importantly, with Redmond 2050 now adopted, we have a very refined and clear vision to guide this process. So much of that vision is embedded in the new climate resilience and sustainability element of the comprehensive plan, which establishes the, the policy, the key policy direction that you see here. This is a summary of, I think, over 40 different policy strategies. But through this process, we heard from the community, or through Redmond 2050, we heard through, from the community, that they really want to see the clean energy transition happening here in Redmond, and they want to be resilient to climate impacts, and they want to ensure that equity is at the center of our strategy. And so we are moving into the ESAP refresh with, again, a very clear vision from the community, and now we're working to develop a refined strategy to make that vision a reality. So you've heard me talk about this, I think in December, I was before council to, to present the scope of work and get feedback on the scope of work for the RFP. And, but again, our big priorities for this process are to prioritize, to focus, and to create an actionable strategy for the city. But most importantly, we also want to use this process to activate the community to take action, and we want to be strengthening our partnerships with the community along the way. And it's this last bullet point in particular that we want to spend a little bit of time discussing this evening, as this is again, the foundation for the plan update and where the sustainability team is spending a lot of our time and capacity right now. So as you may recall, the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee is the key committee that's guiding the refresh, and they have been advising staff, again, as we develop the scope of work and even the engagement strategy. But they've been saying from the very beginning that they want to make sure that we're using this process, the ESAP refresh process, to catalyze community action. So we're going to be before the community, we don't just want to ask them, hey, what are the things we as a city should do, but how can we all work together to advance this vision as a community? So again, you saw this reflected in the scope of work, and it, I will tell you, it's fundamentally shifting how we're thinking about the plan and how we're, we're planning this engagement work and we're executing this engagement work. So with all of that in mind, so our goal is to engage and inspire the community through the update process to foster a sense of collective ownership and excitement about achieving a healthy and sustainable and resilient Redmond. And we're seeing this engagement kind of goal come, come about in about, in three pillars. So first is prioritizing engagement of a wide and diverse audience through this process while growing the community's understanding of climate and sustainability efforts and ultimately activating people to advance climate solutions in their own homes and their own communities. And so we worked with the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, staff, and nonprofit partners to develop an engagement strategy that's working towards, again, these priorities of engaging, educating, and activating the community throughout the ESAP refresh process. So you'll see a lot of different tactics that are highlighted here to support these priorities. But what I did want to focus on is the NGO capacity building piece and the partnership component in particular. So rather than assume that all audiences have equal access to the channels that we typically use at the city, our strategy is to prioritize more resources and time to remove, removing those barriers to participation. And so we're intentionally trying to engage audiences who haven't participated in climate and sustainability work before, primarily again, through these new NGO partners and meeting the community where they, where they're at. So we have been able, we're fortunate to have some grant dollars, so we've been able to establish formal partnerships with two different nonprofit partners to help fund them and support this work. So right now that is United Hub and Indian American Community Services. And we're working to establish two more partner agreements. So again, we can resource community partners to reach their members and help inform the plan update while also educating the community and building their capacity in this space as well. Because again, we're not looking at just a one-year process, but how do we establish long-term partnerships to reach these goals? And the community partners are really, again, helping to define the best ways to activate these goals and to increase impact. And it's really been, I think, a great learning experience for our team as well as we've worked through this. And I will say too, that all of this is building on the great work and the relationships that were established by the Redmond 2050 team. So hopefully, a lot of what you're hearing today isn't a surprise because they've already blazed that trail and we are just gleaning all of the great benefits and example that they provided at the city. So again, this is just a very high level summary here, but really, again, continuously updating, we are continuously updating our website as well with the events and opportunities for the community to engage. And we, we do welcome if there are new events or groups that you feel like may be worth us reaching out to and establishing partnerships. Again, we're not looking at it as just this finite time period, but building that capacity long-term to support implementation. And so we welcome those, those ideas. So the engagement work actually started last month, but what you can see generally here is we're kind of following this pathway of kind of higher level, starting with survey and general community outreach in June to raise awareness and tabling. July and August and into September, we'll be diving deeper with community groups through focus groups and community workshops. And then into the fall, again, diving even deeper as we get more specific actions and details based on the community feedback. And that will all culminate into engagement around the draft plan in late fall. Again, all the while educating the community to increase understanding, awareness, and support for all of this work, again, looking to the long term. So that's the, the engagement side of the, the house, and again, where we've been spending a lot of our capacity or time. And the other side that we, we're working on right now is a lot of the data analysis. So, because we are rethinking and again, wanting to take a fresh look at the climate analysis and the kind of the strategy development for the refresh. So if we, we look first, you know, on the left, we, with our current 2020 ESAP. So our strategy, our strategy was developed based on a really robust and I'd say very standard climate planning process to generate that strategy. So that's really looking at historic emissions. So for us, that was a 2011, and then establishing targets from that baseline year. So that ultimately helped us to understand kind of the relative importance of different emission sources, so like buildings, transportation system, that kind of thing. But I would tell you that this process is evolving, and I think everyone is trying to figure out like, how do we, we have very big goals, everyone does, right? Even in the state of Washington, we have big goals, how, what is the best way to get there? And I think everybody's grappling with that, right? Because a lot of the data is showing a lot of cities aren't making those goals. So everyone's just, again, trying to rethink, how do we make the most impact? How do we use our resources most effectively? So with the 2025 refresh, we are looking to reorient our actions towards very tangible changes that need to happen in Redmond. And so that means defining what success, what success looks like to, to meet our goals. So examples of that might be, I mean, you know, how many homes need to be retrofitted or how many vehicle trips need to be shifted to other modes, for instance? And so it's, this new framing will, we hope, give us clarity and focus so that we can prioritize our actions and again, really move the needle in our community. I'll say this is a, it's a subtle, but I think a very important shift that we really hope focuses our work and increases our impact. So again, more to come here. I realize it's kind of a vague kind of shift, but hopefully, again, as you start, as we start to kind of generate the strategies and actions and things like that in partnership with the community, this shift will become more clear. But again, going back to that root of prioritizing and simplifying the plan is, and focusing the plan again, is a big priority. So we are still targeting a draft plan to council for consideration by the end of the year. And if you look at the bottom, the text in blue, so we have our study session tonight, and we'll be bringing you another informational update at the July Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the Whole Meeting. And then our next study session will be in September, where we plan to review, you know, what we heard from the community and get feedback from council and kind of the general framework of the plan. And then the, review the draft plan at the October 14th study session, again, hopefully on track for plan launch or adoption by the end of the year. We do have time if we need to go into the new year, but again, we're really hoping to wrap this up so we can focus, really refocus our, our attention and time on implementation work. So that again, is just high level. Again, we just wanted to make sure that we were checking in with council again. Yeah, I can open it up for any, any questions or discussion, again, clarification on anything I discuss tonight.
Thank you so much, Ms. Liebeck. I see there are already some questions. Councilmember Fields.
So on the issue of engagement and getting ideas and, you know, and I think it's, I think it's, your description of what you're doing is not vague at all. I think it's very targeted and I think, and it's very clear to me. So it's great. There is sort of a time honored, as long as humanity's been around, method of doing this and that, you know, gather everybody together and say, hey, what do you think we ought to do about those bears that keep attacking us at night or whatever? Would we consider sponsoring a conference or an event? We have that big senior center building over there. What I find when I go through my days is I, I meet people who tell me things that I've never even heard of before, new technology, new ideas. There's a startup business here, a micro business. With the right invitation and getting the right group of people and the right organization, I think that we would, could advance this knowledge by leaps and bounds if we actually made that effort.
Yeah, absolutely. There's again, a lot of different ways. I mean, one in particular that recently came up, our Public Works Department, specifically Eric Dawson and his team are looking at hosting a Women in Carbon film screening with a panel. So again, just one small way, and we can certainly, if, you know, you have other ideas or thoughts on this, we can look at that. We also have a community workshop planned as well as like picnic in the park where we're bringing the community together. So again, we're really trying to meet people where they're at and yeah, bring about community as much as we can.
Council vice president Forsey.
Thank you. I was also looking at the engagement section and getting really excited about the potential and possibilities there. I know Lunch and Learns are a big thing at big companies, but I was wondering if we could maybe host some for smaller companies or their recorded. I know you've already done some recorded content for our streaming channel, but maybe that could air, say, on a fifth Tuesday when we don't have council meetings or in August when we're on recess. Maybe we have some of those that just are in the can, ready to go. Also looked at the trivia night. I am a, I'm a huge trivia night nerd, and I was thinking, how cool would it be if we could have the community have teams and then council as a team and the community's challenging our knowledge for a trivia night? So that could be a potential draw and very fun, I think personally. But I love the ideas that you have. I'm, I'm here for it. Let us know how we can help and participate and keep up the good work.
Councilmember Noema Kamina.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge just how adaptive I'm hearing, right? Like that we, we had this plan based on the feedback that we had and working together, collaborating with our community and saying, okay, let's, let's go back and let's rework this. And just, again, hearing, because that's the, the through line that I'm hearing through all of this is, hey, we asked, this is the feedback that you're giving us, and now we're reworking what we were previously thinking and moving forward based on the needs of the community. So I just wanted to call that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the work on this. Really appreciate having Mike on the team. That's fantastic. And I want to recognize the committee members who, it sounds like have really been exerting some leadership to make sure that we are walking with community and not in front of or behind or just really in partnership, and I appreciate that. I have two questions. I want to be clear that when you say we want to get more focused on the actions we can control, I assume you also mean the ones that can make the biggest impact with the things we can control. But I want to be clear with, with ourselves and with community that we're still steadfast in those goals. We've got these key deadlines at 2030 and 2050. I'm seeing Jenny nod, so I'm going to move on to my second question for the sake of time. So thank you so much, really do appreciate that. And the second, Jenny, I'm really glad you mentioned Public Works because I just want to use this as an opportunity to check in, I think, excuse me, as we get going and continue to pursue the MOC, the Municipal Operations Center redevelopment, I just see it as an opportunity where our values, and our community's values, that's the thing, the ESAC members, they also represent the leadership in community. Redmond is a place that cares a ton about climate readiness and resilience. So when it comes to the MOC, are you connected in with that process? As you get ready to make some recommendations toward the fall, are they recommendations that are going to be implementable when it comes to the MOC? I just want to get a sense of how that partnership with Public Works is looking right now for you.
I will say we have an amazing team in Public Works that's leading this project, and I would say they are, they teach me things on all of this stuff. So we're really fortunate and I, yeah, we talk frequently, I was just talking with them today. So they are amazing partners and our sustainability team is committed to being, you know, equal partners for them to, again, support that process where they need it. But again, they come with very, a very deep bench of knowledge. Again, lots of lessons learned with the Redmond Senior Community Center, for instance, that they're absolutely bringing to the MOC process as well. So we're very fortunate at the city.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that you're all connected on that, and I, I hope that that will continue. We also took the time to study when we had the grant dollars, the opportunity for battery and solar storage. We learned a lot of lessons about what that would apply to here on the municipal campus, but the MOC hopefully can apply some of those lessons too. Thank you for your work on this, and I look forward to the next update.
Thank you. Not seeing other questions. I'll ask a question, so, or more a comment on, I appreciate the, the work on thinking about who to reach out to. And cur, or actually, a question is, have we been, are we planning to actively be engaging with PTAs? I feel like those are some really built-in great groups that have regular meetings where you could go present on the project and solicit feedback if you wanted to do a little road show. And that often each PTA will have its own special sustainability committee and, and will be some of the ones that'll be implementing in their homes, some of these things. Is that part of the plan already?
We haven't done explicit outreach to the PTA committees. We did just actually last week have a conversation with Lake Washington School District, and then we have monthly office hours where multiple PTA members, active PTA members are attending. So we're able to kind of give them updates and talk through their questions then. But I think that's a great flag for just some dedicated engagement to the PTAs, so we'll definitely reach out. We know the chair of the Sustainability Board for the PTA, so.
Oh, yeah, she's very active for the bigger PTA, yeah. And then I guess as a follow-up on, on the goals, I also just wanted to note that I appreciate thinking about, you know, getting down to those minutia. I think when we think about also the ESAP's evolution and how we did I think when we think about also the ESAP's evolution and how we did do the zero-carbon strategy that was really for the municipal operations piece, and, you know, if we say we want to get to this by 2030, what are the different pieces that we wanted to do there? And that that's kind of like a complementary plan to the ESAP. I feel like what I'm hearing from you, too, is that we do need to build out some of those nuts and bolts, especially for the community emissions of, like, what does it mean? What are we going to track to be able to get ourselves beyond kind of just asking everyone to do their part of what specifically are those, some of those actions? So I'll really look forward to hearing some of that. Did you have a comment? Great, well, thank you. Other questions from the council? Great, well, and then one just question on timeline here before we wrap up. You mentioned that we're going to see the draft plan in October, I think it is. Is, are you, are you planning that we'll see it and then we'll likely have other follow-up study sessions on there? Or will we have kind of seen pieces of it before we see the whole plan put together?
I mean, this is a projected timeline. I can share my screen really quickly. But yeah, our intent is that in September, we'll have, again, we're calling the plan framework. And I'll pull it up, sorry. But that could be that we, again, we will, to your point, show you the pieces along the way. So then when the plan is kind of released, there won't be any surprises in it. Yeah, this is, again, our best estimate as to how these pieces will come together.
Great, so the council will be able to give guidance in the September touch, and then we'll see the kind of written out under each piece touch in October.
Exactly.
Great. All right, any other questions, council? Otherwise, we'll just look forward to getting on this timeline and getting to those next steps.
Us, too.
And as I think Council Vice President Forsyth noted, as you're planning all of these different events, please invite the council, reach out to Deidre to get those events on our calendar. It would be great for council to be able to participate in all these different events and hear the feedback you're hearing for the final decision. Great, with that, we'll close out this item. Thanks, everyone. So the last item on our agenda is council talk time. The first item that I wanted to bring up was just a follow-up on the Hopper item that was introduced at a previous study session that the council had proposed to spend more time with and wanted to follow up to give Council Vice President Forsyth the floor to propose, propose the next step on this. And I did email out to the council the current draft with just a very minor change, which we can share.
So you all have the proposed final draft in your inbox, so go ahead and take a look at that. There's just been two minor adjustments about adding a definition of 2SLGBTQIA+ and adding an alignment with, advocating for alignment with state and county policies. So just some minor friendly amendments, thank you. Otherwise, it is pretty much the same as you had seen it last week. So the proposal would be to move this to consent for next week in conjunction with Pride Month.
Councilmembers, are we good to, does anyone object to putting this on consent on next week's business meeting? Yeah, you can raise your hand now if you have a comment. Councilmember Fields.
You went right to the last question, so. Yeah, I'd like to hear from the mayor. We got an email from her office earlier, so is this something that she supports and sees as an important step?
Mayor Bernie.
Sure, I was just forwarding information from our federal lobbyist as an FYI. So I just wanted to make sure you all had that information.
We did get the information, but I guess my question is, since we are all elected officials at this table, it'd be helpful to hear your support or non-support for this.
Well, I will share that this has been a council action, and so I haven't, like, studied this in great detail, but I've talked to council leadership, and I feel like it's in alignment with the idea that Redmond is a welcoming city, and we have community members who are feeling a little concerned lately, to put it lightly. And so I think that it's a good choice for us at this time to make sure that we, that all of our community members know that they are welcome here.
Thank you, mayor. Other commentary?
All right, seeing none. So it seems like everyone's good to put this on consent, then council leadership will move that on to the consent for next week, and we can vote on it then alongside doing our Pride Month proclamation, which will be fun. And as a reminder, we will be raising the pride flag next week, next Monday. So councilmembers, you should have that on your calendar. And there's also a couple of other upcoming opportunities. There's a Business and Global Games Strategy Session. There's also National Trails Day on the 7th. So anyway, make sure to take a look at your calendar, because Deidre put a bunch of different things on the calendar of upcoming events. This week, I did want to highlight that we have multiple events. Tomorrow is the teen services listening session. We talked about that earlier today, but just as a reminder, we have that tomorrow. Did want to follow up on the thinking council leadership has had in terms of how we make sure to get adequate teen feedback for any future work and decisions that we're going to make, since this is going to be a facilitated session where we get to be kind of flies-on-the-wall listening, but we may want to have more of a discussion. And some councilmembers aren't able to make it tomorrow since it wasn't originally going to be, you know, a noticed meeting. We did want to make sure there's an opportunity in the future for the whole council to kind of have more of a listening engagement session. What we're thinking is this one, hopefully, those of us that can go can listen, bring back at a future council talk time some of the, any reflections that we heard, as well as as we do the work going forward. And then once we get the report that we're looking for on the facilities piece, we could schedule another listening session around that time to be able to hear specifically some feedback for council to hear from the community around facilities. So that way, we can kind of have that engagement as well. And we'll also have additional report back from all of these facilitated sessions at that time. So that way, we can have kind of both a comprehensive amount of data that's been gathered, as well as another touch point in the summertime, later in the summertime for the council to have with teens on the upcoming decision, once we all have a little more clarity on what are our options, what's the information that we actually found out as part of the assessment that's going on. So that's our proposal for kind of how we organize some of the upcoming listening sessions. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I'm just seeking clarity, no normative judgments or anything. So our facilities discussion on the Old Firehouse Teen Center is scheduled for July 22nd, the last study session of July. Are you, suggests, the proposal is sometime either in July or during the August recess to also schedule a listening session?
Yes.
Most likely in August, since we'll have fresh information.
Yes.
Thanks.
We haven't set the date yet, but yes, that's the concept. We'll also try to be respectful of the recess, so we can talk as council about what people's preferences are as we get closer to that. But yeah, that's our goal, because I imagine that we'll probably, yeah, we'll get that information, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do with it, and then be moving forward in the fall. So we'll want to have some of those discussions around that time. Great. And then also wanted to note council conversations happening on Thursday, so hopefully, all the listening public will come join us at Grass Lawn Park. We're going to be doing our speed dating tactic again this time. So we'll all be at, we'll be at Grass Lawn, sitting at tables. This time, you'll be seated with a group of people, and council members will move every 20 minutes to a new table so that everyone gets to talk to different council members. And we'll ask most participants to stay seated, although if participants want to move, they can. But instead of having everyone move at the time mark, this will give us the ability for councilmembers to move around. We won't have set topics, but this will give the opportunity for dynamics, more informal conversation with your council members. So hopefully, everyone is planning to attend. It's noticed as a special meeting. Council Vice President Forsyth.
I just want to note, it's under the dome and not at the, what was pictured in the graphic that went out on social media, just for clarification. Don't go to the little art studio. Make sure you head over to the domed picnic shelter.
Yeah, the big picnic shelter, so, yeah. And hopefully, we'll get as beautiful weather as there is today. So there'll be some light snacks and some good chat. Just to give you a sense of the schedule, we'll do, I think, if you want to do some more informal stuff before we're all seated, come a bit before 5:00, because we'll do a little bit of mingling for the first 10 minutes or so, then I'll kick it off, and then we'll get right into it with five 20-minute sessions for us to be able to do those conversations. Or four? Oh, we'll see, yeah. With 20-minute sessions, so that's about how long you're going to have to talk with the constituents at a time. Any questions on that? All right, I'm just going to keep prolonging this meeting. No, I'm just joking. So last item that I just wanted to bring up in terms of opportunities for engagement is on, just wanted to follow up on Derby Days. We've already been planning a little bit for the council booth and the council parade. I heard from last year that people were really into the idea of bringing popsicles with us in the parade, so we're making plans for that. I'm even happy to bring my own wagon for that, so hopefully, we'll do that. And then I think bubbles were very popular last year for our parade, but we'll be doing kind of similar. We're also going to stay on this porch up here. We've been informed that there is going to be like another special commissioner booth, but we're also still going to invite the commissioners if they want to, when they're not doing their shift at their booth, to come join us. And I've also brought up the idea that it'd be nice to have some RIPA members come join us, too, if they want to, at the table. So we'll see how that all works. And I did hear the idea from Councilmember Stewart earlier that I'll note back to our legislative coordinator in terms of getting information from our new volunteer coordinator on ways that people can plug in and get involved. I think that'd be great to do, so. But just wanted to bring it up. If anyone has any ideas or any, you know, inspiration for Derby Day's things or themes, feel free to let us know. Otherwise, we'll proceed with things that we've heard in the past and that's been fun. With that, I'll open it up. Any items for council talk time? All right, well, seeing none. That brings us to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.